All right, it is seven P M on Wednesday, July fifth, and we're calling to order the Wayne Township Board of Trustees. And I, um, do you all assume you signed in? So we have a roll call, please.
Roll, Mr. Patrick.
Here.
Ms. Coleman.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
All present.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to approve reading this from last week, which was June twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those papers, if I say no.
Aye.
We may change this to the posted agenda.
Reverend, three thousand four thirty dash fifty-one was not on the posted handle.
Okay. All right. Do we have any citizens' comments? All right, moving on. Mr. Camery, always number one.
That would use me up the back. Um, okay, so everything's pretty much... I was hoping to begin with the chip seal today. They were supposed to have been moving in Monday and Tuesday, but they did, they, that did not happen, but they did move in. I actually spoke with the contractor today when they moved in two trucks, and they're supposed to be bringing some more equipment, maybe even, you know, I'm sure with the rain that we just had, maybe slowed them up a little bit, but they're coming from Paulding, Ohio, which is way up north below Toledo. So they're coming our way. Hopefully get started tomorrow. Weather kind of looking too promising for that, but by, you know, by the end of the week, so. It's gonna be a delicate dance between getting them and getting swept and then getting ready for the microseal, but everything, hopefully, depending on, as long as the weather doesn't hurt us too bad, it should be moving right along. Clear Creek did get quail run chipped. They chipped with nines, and so Monday, Schrausler's going to start on their microseal and get that done. When they get done with that, hopefully I've got at least a couple subdivisions that they can get started. You know, getting that, starting with Sandy Run. And, I mean, that's pretty far away. It's got a lot of coal sacks, so that should slow them down a little bit. If I can get the chip seal going, it's a juggling act.
Yeah.
But anyway, hopefully with, depending on whether by the end of next week or at least the middle of the week after that, we should be completed. Let's see, anything else? Still waiting on some parts for, you know, for one of the tractors, or one of the mowers, rather. So once we get that, it'll be back up to a hundred percent, but we're mowed up for the time being, so. Other than that, I'll stand by when the report's way it is. If you guys have anything you could pass along to me? We came through the wind the other day, whatever day it was. This has been a blur, Monday, I guess, maybe Sunday or Monday. We had, the fire department went out on a couple tree down, but they weren't any mine, so.
Yeah, it's been an odd month with the rain and everything.
Yes.
It's like June, July are flipped or something.
Yeah, July is, it's July in Ohio. So, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, nothing from Paul, he is not here. Nothing from Stacy, her report here. We'll be talking about fire department stuff here in our discussion later. So, I guess we will. Um, I do have a question about his, can you back up to Paul's report? I don't know if you can. So his, his calls there, his service calls include anything where we've done any mutual aid calls out?
Correct.
Correct? But they do not include any mutual aid received? It's just anything that Wayne Township has done?
Um, they could include mutual aid received because we would now, if we get a dispatch phone, then we'll have a number on it also.
Okay.
So if it's a, yeah, like you said, it's a run we did, but if we didn't go on mutual aid, then it's not in there?
Yeah, because a lot of times our mutual aid calls will still get, we'll get at least a unit out there, whether it be a duty officer or somebody. Now, if it is a, some of our mutual aid calls, you know, will be just, if we're either out of service or on another run, then it'll be next closest agency that they are on that dispatch. We will, that, those numbers will not be included.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, a part of them probably are included, part are.
Okay. Okay, um, moving on to Gus's administrator's report, Gus Edwards.
Really don't have a whole lot this week. Got an S O P tonight that we had in two thousand seventeen initiated, so we're gonna bring it back. It did do some value. The first year or two, we had it in operation, and it gave a bonus for members that they sought out people, friends, acquaintances or whatever, to encourage them to join the fire department or whatever. It kind of rewards them, and it also rewards a new recruit, provided they fulfill their contract. So we're like, we'd like to bring that back and try that as a, as a staffing, you know, to address our staffing.
Okay.
Independence Day celebration, like I said, really, really weekend, but everything went fine. Rain stopped just in time for the parade. Evening up at the park was, was good. Pretty windy before the sun went down, and there was some talk about not letting fireworks go off, but they did. So, but they worked out good. Like Paul said, they had to end up tilling them about as far as they could tell them in order to keep the debris from where they set them off up there. Ellis Drive is kind of in the way, and it's probably the closest exposure. And we've actually did have, I don't know, I guess it's been fifteen, twenty years ago. We actually did catch a couple real song fire one year ago, so.
That's for a note.
So, but it seems like the mortar cells are used now and they're a little more dependable, and they don't have as much debris that rains down from the sky, but.
Interesting.
So we had that trouble in the past, and I don't know if that's due to the fireworks or due to Paul's being more determined to make sure that, you know, they test every half hour and they get them aimed in the right direction or any debris, the debris field comes down on the ground and not in people's yards, so. Uh, two cases, both were mowed, trimmed for Independence Day weekend. My friend Scott and his crew, who make sure those got done, did a nice job. And again, like he was talking about, he's busy trying to coordinate with the two contractors. And then Daryl's got the budget prepared for tonight for two thousand twenty-four, for its public hearing and for its approval. Just like to thank Daryl, because I'm thinking this might be the last budget that he has.
Can we, can we just turn these on real fast? Because I don't know, stuff is being picked up. I'm sorry, I just noticed that the mics aren't turned on. It's only on the camera. Does it have the lights turned on?
Oh, well, I.
Brief, brief hold.
Oh, yeah. I wonder what to do to ask the workar.
Yeah, I'm still questioning the process with the stick. Takes him a second.
One thing I, I guess I want to call you, Tim, who will get to the budget, is great comment to Daryl's afternoon. He's bound to turn before he goes and leaves office, he's gonna set a record.
Interest.
Make it.
Interest.
Interest received.
We're gaining about twenty-seven thousand on that interest.
Awesome.
Prepare for a few years if we gained a thousand here. It's good for the people that's got money, but those people still want to borrow money. It's hurting them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I think the, the highest year prior to that was about a hundred and eighty thousand. I think we collected one year in interest back in, yeah, I got the sheet on it, but it's probably back in the nineties or whatever we got up to that, maybe early two thousands. When interest rates were up. And we had some cash in the bank, so. I think we should hit up over two hundred thousand this year.
Oh, yeah, we love easily.
So.
Okay, that's good news.
And I think that's all I have.
All right. Okay, so then, next on the agenda is old business. Are we on track for different site? Okay, for next meeting? All right, awesome. You guys give a little demo, or what's the plan?
Yeah, I'll send it to you beforehand.
Okay. Okay. Any other old business?
No.
I don't have any.
Uh, I guess under old business is, I talked to our speaker that was supposed to be here last couple meetings, and he stopped in. I'll pass each down. You take a map, and an invitation is for public officials float down the Little Miami perimeter, and I think it's on like the twenty-first, or eight days on the twenty-eighth. And then they're gonna have, it's gonna leave from Volks Park here in Wayzoo, and they're gonna take out that, cover the bridge, so. Then they're gonna have a luncheon and a program at the Pick It Chiller there at Volks Park, and all that, so if you can't make the float, they are encouraging them also to come to listen to the speaker and stuff at the, at lunch, so.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah, so that was the invitation that took, I became to speak about.
All right. Cool. All right, into new business. Any questions and concerns of the bills that's signed?
I have none. I do not have any.
Thank you. All right, legislation. The first one is Brian Armold. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-eight approving the removal of Brian Armold from the roster of the Wayne Township Fire Department. It looks like he turned in his equipment, he, and he does not have enough continuing education, continuing education credits in order to renew his certification. Hasn't done any training, her calls in the last two years, so here's that he does, is not really on the department, we just need to clean up the roles, if we understand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you took about, uh, in May of every year, Paul goes and pulls all the, when you have to turn in your certifications, all those that have it, and so we haven't done this in probably three or four years, especially with COVID, and so, and now he's finding those that, just example, I think like Brian Armold, I think what he sent out to you, it showed where not only is his certification expired, it's been expired for over a year, and so he's not done anything to get his certification back, and hasn't made any runs for two years, so, you know, again, then he did turn in his gear, so it's just a matter of officially documenting that he's removed from the roster, so it doesn't count towards any of the stuff that we apply for, for our insurance and that type of stuff.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-eight?
I will second that.
I have a motion that Mr. Patrick sent, but Mr. Jacobs did not resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-eight. Our role there on, Mr. Patrick, you, Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Jay Hills?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted, this is the, is the ever and ever by twenty twenty-three.
All right. Did we skip, so I see the next one is twenty twenty-three dash forty-nine, but then we have twenty twenty-three dash fifty-one. Is there, is there a fifty we missed or something?
It's in, that's the resolution for the budget, fifty is the.
Oh, okay, all right, great. I see we move on to twenty twenty-three dash fifty-one. And this is resolution approving a, of Wayne Township Fire Department sign-on bonus for new members and their sponsors. So the proposal is, let me see where it is here. Yeah, a thousand, okay, the sponsor would receive, this is what Chief Shear came up with, a thousand dollars in two payouts, five hundred dollars at the person's hire date, and twelve months later, another a thousand dollars if that person is still here, I assume. And then the applicant, um, a thousand dollars total in four different payments, six months, one year, two years, and three years, at two hundred and fifty dollars apiece. I know we said on the last one from twenty seventeen, there was no end date on it, so is there an end date on this one?
Uh, did not go to an end date, but did reference back that this is just a, yes, revision of the two thousand seventeen.
So have we been paying sign-on bonus since four, from the twenty seventeen one?
It's been a number of years since we've paid that.
Yeah, I think it lasted for a year or two, and then we put a stop to it, but I don't think we had an official resolution that stopped it. I think we just had it ended this year, or there was some sort of a motion or something. We didn't go back and search through the minutes to find out exactly when we ceased that, but again, this one, I didn't put a stop date on it, so we could let it run till whenever it were.
But this also increases the money per.
Basically doubles it, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
From five hundred to a thousand.
So the most you'd be out, we'd be out is the initial five hundred when this applicant signed on. Other than that, it's gonna be on the performance as far as, you know, if they don't continue to be active, then the sponsor will not get the second five hundred dollars, and then be.
Is it the new sign-on, the two hundred and fifty dollar increments, or is it?
It's six, the first is the six months on the applicant, it's not on sign-on.
Okay, it's after six months.
Yeah.
Okay, I can remember, I read to it, but I don't remember what was.
So I, in this case, I think we should bump the two fifty for the applicant up to five hundred for the first and second increments.
To make it a total of two, or fifteen hundred?
Yeah. I think two fifty's weak. I think if we want to actually do something, we should do something.
And I think that there should be an end date on it.
So how successful was the first one in two thousand seventeen?
Probably not very, if we stopped it.
It wasn't.
It wasn't?
It wasn't pretty. I can't remember, I have to go back to a little bit.
Is it, we add six to?
Something like that, six.
Six eight, something like that.
I think this helps, but it doesn't solve our problem. I mean, we're gonna get people with an N plus coming in and getting that, but inevitably, it's gonna come down to dollar per hour that the, that the people are working. I mean, that's what it's gonna come down to. That's what it's gonna be, that's what the guys talk about, that's what everybody talks about. It's a dollar per hour, what am I making over Clear Creek? Can I verse here or verse wherever? I mean, I'm just using that as a stamp, I'm not saying that specifically. But it's a dollar per hour, right?
Yeah, because waiting two years to get two hundred and fifty dollars isn't, you're not gonna, you're not gonna do it if you're not gonna do it, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's just like, a lot of them are gonna sign on bonus like right now, and it's, you could give a substantial amount, but does that give us the person staying long-term? You know? And that's a year, I mean, it's a start.
I agree with you, roll salary, or get the pay.
Correct.
So is it even worth while?
Well, see, the thing, like, you know, you're talking about, a lot of guys talk about pension versus dollar per hour, right? And it goes back and forth of that, too.
I mean, to me, two hundred and fifty dollars is insulting.
Well, that's two hundred and fifty dollars on top of what you're gonna be making as a volunteer for sure.
I hear that, but, but, but I mean, you know, just comparatively, um, you know, and then to have it tilted toward the sponsor.
Right.
I don't, I don't know.
Make it there somewhat quicker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I, this isn't something big, my heels in over, I'm just, just, just thought, I.
Me, I guess I would give more to the applicant to try to pertain to keep them to stay and then give it to the sponsor. I get the sponsor probably has done, you know, talked to the person, talked to them in coming over. I mean, there are some advantages of being here in our small, you know, right? You're not gonna have to make any money, you're not gonna be out there all the time. You know, you're gonna have a little bit more complacency with that part of it, but it's still, like I said, dollar per hour, if you can offset it, with maybe more of a higher bonus, bringing in stuff like that, that might help. I get where they're going for it, it makes sense, because you're trying to proactively market out to the people to get it.
But, you know.
Like you said, I agree with you.
And if you want to, you know, increase the amount of money, then just take it from the two years and the three years, and just squish it down. Because nobody's gonna be like, well, you know, I was going to quit my third year.
Waiting for that two hundred and fifty dollars.
For that two fifty. I mean, you know.
Hold me on.
Absolutely, that might pay my power bill.
That's right.
You know. So, thanks, Andy.
Yeah.
Oh, so, you know, I, I, I think, you know, if we do something, and maybe we hold on this until Paul gets back, so we can discuss with Paul, Chief Shear, you know, but, but I, I do think that the amount of two fifty, you know, it's, five hundred dollars is not a lot, but I think it looks better on paper, and it looks, it feels better in your mind that, you know, five hundred dollars, you could get a couple plane tickets and go to Florida for the weekend, maybe fly a legion, and don't pack any luggage.
It's all carry on.
I tend to agree.
Well, yeah, the other thing that, I guess, I'd call your attention is that when we started this in two thousand seventeen, every application that came through had a sponsor tied to it. Whether or not they were convinced.
Put me down.
Yes.
Put me down.
So.
So, so, and, and that's, you know, okay. What I would say is, anytime we do something, especially when it comes to throwing money at the problem, we need to ask ourselves, what is the goal? You know, what, what type of behavior are we looking to affect and change? So what type of change in behavior is this going to give us? Everybody gets a sponsor, so everybody, you know, everyone of our members, and, and you know what? I'm not saying that's, that's the worst thing in the world either, because
Yeah.
they're incentivized to stay and to network and to become friends and everything else, and camaraderie, so, you know, at the same time, I fully believe that the applicant is, that's who we're trying to attract. And, you know, the sponsor, kick them, you know, a little bit of something by all means, but I, I, I think the applicant's where the focus should be on this, or at very least, be on parity.
Yeah. So let's hold it till Paul's back? Okay.
Okay.
All right. That sounds good to me.
I agree.
Okay.
Good for now.
So no, no voting on that?
No vote.
No vote for you. Okay, I honestly do not want to get into the whole other fire department thing before a budget meeting, but I'm like, look at the time, so it's seven twenty-four.
We don't have to wait until seven thirty. I just posted it that.
Okay.
It would be during this meeting.
Okay, great.
I'm looking.
Then we will go into the budget. If anyone has any issues with that, let me know.
Okay.
Well, as Gus said, this is a proposed estimated, guesstimated budget for this one year, twenty twenty-four, and I'll give you, want you to copy and kind of highlighted the fund balances as of January first, twenty twenty-four, estimated, and I highlighted the revenues, total revenues for each one of the funds, and I highlighted the total expenditures for each fund. So beginning at the general fund, I estimate January first, twenty twenty-four, we'll have one million eight hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-four cents, with total revenues of six hundred twenty-nine dollars, six hundred twenty-nine, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars, with total expenditures of five hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred seventy-four dollars and six cents. Leaving a balance on December thirty-first of one million nine hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents, with three thousand dollars encumbered, and, and encumbered, unencumbered balance, December thirty-first, of one million nine hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents. And next would be the motor vehicle license tax fund. Estimated January first balance of eleven thousand, seven dollars and fifteen cents. Estimated revenue of eight, nineteen thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars. Estimated expenditures of twenty thousand dollars. Fund balance, December thirty-first, of ten thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars and fifteen cents, with no encumbrances. Moving to the gasoline tax fund, estimated balance, January first, four hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred thirty dollars and thirty-eight cents, with revenues of one hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred dollars, with total expenditures of three hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. With a fund balance, December thirty-first, of two, three hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred thirty dollars and thirty-eight cents, less three thousand encumbrances, even an unencumbered balance of three hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred thirty dollars and thirty-eight cents. Moving to the Royden Ridge Fund, estimated balance, January first, three hundred twenty-two thousand, eighty-one dollars and forty-five cents. Estimated revenue of four hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. Estimated expenditures, five hundred eighty thousand, four hundred fifty dollars. Leaving a balance, December thirty-first, of one hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred thirty-one dollars and forty-five cents, less five thousand dollars encumbrances, leaving an unencumbered balance of one hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred thirty-one dollars and forty-five cents. Moving to the fire district fund, January first balance, estimated two million, five hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars and seven cents, with revenues of seven hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Total expenditures of seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Leaving a balance, December thirty-first, of two million, five hundred seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and seven cents, less encumbrances of five thousand dollars for an unencumbered balance of two million, five hundred seventy-three thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and seven cents. Moving to the fire fund B, estimated balance, January first, seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-two cents, with estimated revenues of one hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars, and total expenditures estimated, seven hundred forty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Leaving a balance, December thirty-first, of five hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred fifty-two, one dollars and forty-two cents, less ten thousand dollars encumbrance, leaving an unencumbered balance, December thirty-first, of five hundred one thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-two cents. Moving to the permissible vehicle license tax funds, fund, estimated balance of fifty-one thousand, two hundred six dollars and forty-one cents as of January first, twenty twenty-four. Total revenues estimated, one hundred ten thousand, five hundred dollars. Estimated expenditures, one hundred forty thousand dollars. Leaving a fund balance, December thirty-first, of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred six dollars and forty-one cents, with zero encumbrances. Moving to the local fiscal recovery fund, estimated balance, two hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety-two, ninety cents, January first, twenty twenty-four. No revenues on this fund because we're, we've got to use it, and spend it out. Total expenditures of two hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety cents. Leaving a balance, December thirty-first, of zero dollars. Moving to the lighting district. Moving to the lighting district fund, estimated balance January first, twelve thousand, four hundred two dollars and seventy-eight cents with an estimated revenue of fourteen thousand dollars and an estimated expenditure of fourteen thousand dollars. Leaving a fund balance, December thirty-first of twelve thousand, four hundred two dollars and seventy-eight cents with zero balances encumbered. And to the food pantry fund, estimated balance, January first, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-four cents. Total revenues of approximately three hundred dollars gifts. Uh, total expenditures, two thousand dollars, leaving a balance, December thirty-first of six hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-four cents. So that food pantry fund is dwindling away.
It's, I, I can't say really quickly because we've had that a number of years. The majority of the years, they were asking for three thousand dollars, but some years we didn't request anything, so that's how it's held on as long as it has.
How did, how does it get funded?
How did they get funded? Through the Hartsocks. They, they bought the squads, two squads for us, one for the next two guys, and also put twenty-five thousand.
There's a gift from the state of Mary Hartsock.
Yeah.
Twenty-five thousand for Food Pantry and, actually, we've, it's probably lasted less than twenty years.
Oh, it has, yeah, I thought it was, it's easy.
I think they wanted it spent, you know, rather, I don't want to say immediately, but, you know, they wanted it to be put to use and.
We basically left it up to the food pantry till they had the request. And I guess the past couple of years, they didn't, I don't know if they had a change of hands at the food pantry, but they didn't realize the money was even there, but they have requested.
I think especially COVID.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So going over all that, uh, I'll go, I'll look again, general fund revenue would be six hundred twenty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars with expenditures of five hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred seventy-four dollars and six cents. Motor vehicle license tax fund with revenues of nineteen thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars with expenditures of twenty thousand dollars. Gasoline tax fund, revenues of one hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred dollars with expenditures of three hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. Road bridge fund, revenues of four hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars with expenditures of five hundred eighty thousand, four hundred fifty dollars. Art district fund, with revenues of seven hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars, expenditures of seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Fire fund B, revenues of four hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars and expenditures of seven hundred forty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Permissible motor vehicle license tax, one hundred ten thousand, five hundred dollars, expenditures of one hundred forty thousand dollars. Local fiscal recovery fund, zero revenues, expenditures two hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety cents. Lighting district fund, fourteen thousand dollars in revenue and fourteen thousand dollars in expenditures. Food pantry fund, revenues estimated three hundred dollars, expenditures two thousand. Grand total of all funds, it would be revenues of two hun, two million, six hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars with expenditures of three million, three hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. This is including, uh, the equipment that, in the, uh, fire fund B, that's including equipment that was supposedly going to be bought last year, that we didn't buy, and what we had planned to buy for next year would combine them together, if we get to the point where we're going to buy it all, it would be there.
What equipment is that?
Pardon?
What equipment is that?
Uh, you got the list, Gus?
Uh, no, not off the, uh, there's a cascade system that needs to be placed.
Right, not the money you're working for, so.
And, uh.
It is.
Trying to think what other big, I think the, uh, maybe the brush truck. And then I'm not sure.
I think it was tanker on there, wasn't it? Or was it rush?
Tanker was coming, I don't know if it was twenty-four or, it may have been twenty-four.
I've got the list in on my desk, I can get one.
I can pull it up.
That's that Seabreeze, right, that we're waiting on right now?
No, that's already.
That's already.
That's already covered, yeah.
That's already, okay.
Everything, just for example, the ship seal and, uh, story seal and the rejuvenator, it's all been encumbered in. On those three projects, we encumbered twenty-five thousand dollars for each project out of the, uh, local fiscal recovery fund. Then on the, uh, we encumbered seventy-five thousand dollars of the additional amount for the fire engine.
Right.
Out there also, so we've had, we've got a hundred fifty thousand dollars encumbrances in there right now for, uh, the engine plus the hardship and road work, you know?
We should, yeah. Oh, okay, I see, that's out of two thirty-eight.
So I see, um, I mean, you talked about, I don't see earnings on investments, it looks like a zero on all this stuff, but we talked about you were earning a lot of money.
Investments, there's only certain investments or certain funds cannot take interest, they gotta go to the general fund.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. So the general fund has.
The general fund, if you look at the general fund, it's our.
Twenty-nine, four hundred with expenditures five thirty-one.
Yeah, the in, the interest estimated this year will be two hundred fifty thousand, two hundred seventy-five next year.
Got it.
Good job, Gary.
Yeah.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yep, call, up, up to Washington, he's stolen, oh, this guy stole, he's crazy.
Yeah, really?
Everything we plan to buy, we gotta hold it off now.
Gotta hold off, yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
We put a hold on all this in twenty-three, and those are the items that are actually included in the budget?
I included these and what's in twenty-four.
Got it.
That's good all.
Yep. If we do, I mean, like I said, this is a guesstimation, estimation, however you want to word it, when we come to appropriations and, uh, by end of March next year, we have to appropriate the monies then. Even at that, we can shift, uh, shift, uh, funds from appropriation to appropriation within the fund. We always put so much into, uh, transfers out, which we end up shifting up and down into appropriations within each fund.
You had a dump truck, didn't you? Didn't, are we supposed to be getting a?
Well, he's still looking, he's still looking.
He's still looking, but that's gonna.
Yeah, I've got, I've got some money, I've got some money within my budget even for this year.
Right.
Um, you know, if I can find something, which, um.
We, you know, we discussed that, too.
Right.
That's why I.
And then we've got some in for next year as well.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah.
Well, then hopefully he can find something within appropriations.
Right. I've, you know, I've said for a long time, I don't, there's gonna, there might come a time that, I don't care if you've got a million dollars in your pocket, there ain't nothing out there to buy, you're not a wheel spin.
That's right.
That's pretty much it, yes. Pretty much it. And we put a hundred fifty, of course, we, for next year, if you don't, good for this year, we got a hundred fifty for next.
For next year.
We have already appropriated a hundred twenty-five for this year.
Right. Yeah, I've been, I've been stabbing the, the websites and, and keeping an eye out, and, and in between times, I will, I'll get more diligent, more pressurized on it once I get my resurfacing done.
Right.
Once that's out of the way, then I, 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 historically, that's when I start really focusing hard on it. So, we'll see.
Okay, anybody want to make any changes or any questions about the proposed budget?
Still. And we thank you, Daryl.
Thank you, Daryl, yes.
He's the coffee.
So I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty, which is approving the budget of Wayne Township, Warren County, Ohio, as estimated for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion of Mr. Coleman, second, but Mr. Patrick, the dot resolution twenty twenty-three fifty. I'll roll there on, Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this the fifth day of July twenty twenty-three.
Okay. All right, now we get to talk about potential new tax levy for the fire department, for full-time employees. So Gus, do you want to present what you put together to start with, or how do you want to proceed like this?
Okay, and, um, okay, um, again, this is for consideration of putting into the ballot, uh, a fire levy, whether it be a two-millennial, two mill additional, or another amount as determined by the board. Again, it's for, primarily the purpose for this would be staffing of the new station and day-to-day activities. Uh, this just gives you some background and history of the levies that we currently have for operating or firing EMS services. We have the, uh, two-point-four-five mill levy that brings in six hundred seven thousand, one hundred and two dollars a year. Then the one-point-eight mill levy that brings in the four forty-six. And that one primarily takes care of capital replacement items, such as those we just looked at on the list. Uh, then we also have some revenue from grants, our EMS soft billing, and also contracts. Contracts would be like a contract with Wausau Township. Uh, current aids to our equipment and apparatus, agents of fleet, just list out, everything on this side of the chart is, uh, high-dollar capital items that usually have a longer, uh, life range, they average around thirty, twenty, thirty years for replacement cycle. So we have Engine ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, and Rescue ninety-one, and Tanker ninety-one, and Tanker ninety-two. You can see their age and years there, newest thing is Engine ninety-one at thirteen years. Up to, uh, twenty-six are the tankers. And on this side of the chart, you have your smaller units, they're recommended for replacement anywhere from five to ten years. Next Squad ninety-one, Squad ninety-two, Grass Truck, the Chief Car, and Duty Officer's Car. Uh, that side of our fleet is in pretty good shape, uh, Squad ninety-one is one year, ninety-two is four years. Grass Truck sixteen, Chief Car is four years, and Duty Officer's nine years. Down here, you can see the average age of the fleets, twenty-two point eight-three on this side and six point eight years on the five to ten side. So they're all over the fifty percentile, but, uh, not in bad shape. And this is a proposed spending, uh, chart, this future equipment expenses, as you can see, uh, we had some high expenditure years, some equipment here, right now, we're getting, um, twenty-four is, you know, is projected as a high year with a, not much projected out that we need in twenty-five, but then it starts going up in twenty-six, twenty-seven with a, a big year expenditures in twenty-eight. Looking further out to that, we have an off year, and then thirty's a big year. And then maybe getting further out of the chart where it's really hard to tell if things get adjusted, but it does slack off there. And we noticed this quite a bit, uh, when we saved for the fire station is, uh, our capital purchase plan usually had about two out of every five years where it would spike up. We'd have about three years there where we could really save money to go towards, uh, the fire station, so, um, typically, you know, it ebb and flows, but you have some down periods to where, you know, you can save money for other purposes.
So Gus?
Yes.
How much do we owe on the new fire station?
Zero.
Zero dollars, we paid for it in full.
Yes.
Good to know.
Still, the funds are pretty good.
Yeah.
Now we're into, uh, May this.
Yes.
Well, we've got, we have got any big issues up there with, uh, well, I'll just give it that for right now.
Okay.
So, uh, this is capital year, or twelve-year capital purchase plan. These numbers weren't updated like they were on the chart that we just pulled up, Paul just updated that chart this past year. So these numbers that are on this chart, uh, they're twenty-twenty-one prices, and they went up ten to twenty percent that year, and then I've added in here that they could probably increase another twenty to thirty percent in twenty-two and twenty-three. So again, it's just a, a, a chart that shows, you know, what we need, when we need it, and then we update it, you know, as we go. Uh, for with publications, you know, I would update this chart with a current evaluation chart. But this was taken off of, uh, last year's, um, additional levy that we had passed. Uh, this is, uh, you know, question mark, how many mills do we need additional? This levy will be used for staffing to assist in the declining number of volunteers. Let's make sure there's someone available to respond to an emergency twenty-four hours a day, every day. We submit this levy to our electorate for their consideration. Uh, this over here is just a worksheet that the county auditor does to find out our rates in order to come up, what, for example, a milx rate, one mill would generate three hundred forty-six thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars. So that's the basis that we have to go on to determine the amount that we need. Uh, last year, we determined the amount we needed was, you know, around the six hundred thousand dollar range or just over six hundred thousand. Actually, we were, we were satisfied with six hundred thousand last year when we put it to the electorate. Uh, total calls, five-year trend line. As you can see, two thousand eighteen went down, but then it's, it's been going up this year, we pretty much, I think, with all the board tonight, we were about fifteen, sixteen runs behind last year's. So we're about stayed this year from, uh, last year. So there's no dramatic increase, it's just a gradual incline of calls. And this chart shows the call volume versus the personnel, with the orange line being the personnel, which is, shows you it being a declining from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-two. The blue line, on the other hand, is the call volume, which you see is on the axis of, uh, going up. So if it comes a point in time where same amount of people are taking, uh, more runs, or the fewer the people, our membership's going down, a lot of run volumes going up.
And what date are those, uh, those years? When are they calculated? Is it in May, like you said before, or is it? Anyway, is that, is that the end of May?
Those are end-of-year dates.
End of year, yes.
Which would be.
Calendar year.
Calendar year, end of, uh, November.
Thirty, yeah, the end of November.
November.
The end of November, so, okay, okay.
So this one here would be November two thousand seventeen, and the latest would be, uh, two thousand twenty-two. And the average response time, and this is the one that's probably, you know, in my opinion, one of the most critical things of providing a good service. Uh, the orange line is the average fire response, over here on the left axis is the, uh, is the time of the response to get to the emergency. And the blue line is the average of the EMS response, orange is for fire. So we see the EMS response, because we do schedule those people, uh, it stays pretty consistent, you know, they're, they know that they're going to go on a run, whether responding from home, or whether it's during the daytime in the week, when we have part-time people at the station.
Does that include, that's just our runs, correct? Not the mutual weight?
Yes, it's just our runs. And, you know, fire can really, uh, it can really deviate, sometimes it'll be longer, but due to the fact that, you know, actually, sometimes we get out quicker because it's, somebody may be around the firehouse, and I have to come from home, so that's why sometimes you'll see it a little bit lower.
Is anyone scheduled for the EMS run with the fire at all?
Yes, yes.
So theoretically, you could have a brownouts, as we, you guys call brownouts, terminology, for the EMS, because you don't have a fire.
You could, if there, because I'd be first, yeah, depending on the emergency. Now, if it was a tree, tree limbs down or whatever, then your squad may not be going out of service for tree limbs.
Okay.
And this is an example, I guess, here on the fire side, probably in two thousand eighteen, if we went back and looked at a lot of those runs, a lot of those runs were probably windstorm, that type of thing, where you had people, the response time was lower because you had multiple responses in a period of time, you know, over day.
They got that, they got that first run, and they're all hanging out at the firehouse, you know, the storm is likely, you know, the next one comes, they all go. The next one comes, they all go, because they're already there. So that, that response time dramatically shortened.
Makes sense.
So with, with addition of some full-time staffing, we feel that we can get this time down under five minutes on the blue line. So we're, we're roughly at seven minutes, seven fifteen, seven minutes, fifteen seconds, so, you know, we feel that we can get it down under five if we actually. You know, we feel that we can get it down under five if we actually had people there, more people there at the station. And this here is six full-time employees, and that would be two people on the station 24 hours, on and 48 hours off, or equivalent as needed. This chart represents six people with varying certification levels and varying years of service. So what we have over here is, as you can see on this first line, that would just be a regular firefighter EMT, we named him Alvin. This next line would be a firefighter two, and he'd be an advanced EMT, we'll call him Bob. And we have a firefighter two that's a paramedic. And we have a firefighter two, paramedic with five years of service. And we have a firefighter two, paramedic with 10 years of service, and a firefighter two, paramedic with 20 years of service. Again, gave them old names, gave them, worked out a pay rate. In the yellow line, here's a pay rate. Gray line is the annual payroll for 26 pays. And then we also calculated in 70 hours of overtime over a period of the year, and calculated those dollars amount. Then also, they would be entitled to holiday pay, 11 paid holidays.
The 70 hours of overtime, is that on the run specific, or is that filling backfilling shifts or on vacation?
That is primarily for, what we calculate that on is if they had to run at the end of the shift and got an extra hour or whatever, kind of came right at, let's say they're switching at six o'clock, and it came at five thirty, and they didn't, you know, get back till seven. So it was, you know, it wasn't really calculated, you know, it's basically 70 hours is what that represents.
Yeah.
So it really wouldn't be covering, you know, another shift. So then that gives us our total annual salary from each individual classification of type of a member, whether they were firefighter EMT, firefighter two, firefighter two, paramedic, five years' experience, 10 years' experience, or somebody that's been there, you know, over a period of time, maybe on this scale, about 81,000 if he was there for 20 years. Over here in the orange gets to the benefits portion, you got medical, single, and family. More likely, your smaller levels would just be, have them just being an individual on insurance. And then we get down into family plans, when you have the people that have more years of service, that would be probably of a higher age here, where they've been married and so forth. And then we got the HRA, the reimbursement insurance amount. Then the township's contribution to high police and fire, which is the 24%. Life insurance, uniform allowance, and there were compensations been calculated into this, and then that brings up a total cost of what, if we were to have those six members right there, they would cost us $657,000. Now, starting out, we probably have this 20-year guy, so it'd be, it'd be something lower. But I think what we were going on last year is that if we could come up with $600,000 or whatever, and that's what the two-mill levy last year was based on, then the $57,000 or anything to this or that would come out of the regular fire levy. Because we maintain the fire fund B as our capital equipment, and then the fire fund, primary fire fund right now is not only calculating or carrying the chief's salary, it's also carrying our other full-time employees' salary. And so that, that would give us two people at the station 24 hours a day. And so that would get, somebody to respond quickly to any type of emergency that would be fire or EMS.
We would really want to see, if I'm thinking about this correctly, you always want to see a paramedic there, am I right? One of the two, you can be a paramedic level.
You know, ideally, doesn't always want to be a paramedic.
I mean, you see what I'm saying?
Ideally, you want, yeah, you would want, you know, firefighter, paramedic.
So I'm saying, I'm gonna, I'll get the car, I want three cartels there that I can split up in three different shifts, and I can pair a level with him with somebody else that's there, is what I'm thinking.
Sure.
Because I could do EMT with a paramedic at least. You see, I'm just.
Yeah, EMT, driving, and a paramedic.
So really, the 657 is not as accurate as what we'd like. We'd like to at least see three paramedics at 112. You see what I'm saying?
Well, that's what you said, you know, we're not going to have anybody with 20 years, you know, starting off especially, so Frank, Frank and Ed, you know, we can probably find a Steve to go along with Carl, you know, but.
Correct.
It's, it's going to be one of those things where at least, this at least gives us a baseline, allows us to afford it, gives us some runway, and, you know, we can stack a little bit of, stack some funds, that'll be, that'll be ram.
And you see, you're providing with this, four paramedics, and then two just firefighter EMTs. So, you know, you got four of the six being paramedics.
Yeah, correct.
Where does our current employee fall in there? Which, which name is he?
Uh, he's not on here.
No, I know he's not, but if he were on here, which name would he kind of be on here?
Oh, which name would he be? He would just be a firefighter two, advanced EMT.
He'd be Bob?
Yep.
Yeah, he'd be Bob.
Is that what he makes right now?
Seventeen.
Yep, right there.
All right.
He's just, his contract right now is just signed that a little bit. You know, and moving forward with this, ideally, I would see that this would be a whole new group of people, and if we kept the current way we're running now with the chief and then one fill-in position, then your fill-in position could cover any of these three shifts when they were, you know, had personal offer, sick leave, or vacation, or whatever, then you'd have a fill-in person. That's, that's the only thing working with six people on three shifts is that you're only going to have them there when they're there, and when they're, you gotta take off, then, you know, there's nothing left to backfill. But that's where ideally to, to run a, you almost need two more people to run, to run two people on three shifts, three different shifts.
Right. So you need, yeah, you need seven, six, you want eight. I think that is correct, or did I think that wrong? You want to, you have that.
No, you're, you're right.
So even with this, if you have this, you know, that would be a bare minimum, so there would be days that you actually maybe have to, you know, and you could backfill this with part-time too.
Correct.
So if you had people on vacation or offer sick leave, then you could call in a part-time person and backfill it, so, you know. It's just something to start out with, without just trying to go straight from volunteer to full-time, you know, just kind of working your way into it. You know, and who knows how long it would take to even, if this is passed, to fill this. We talked about this last year, and it may take a year or two to, to find six positions or people to fill those positions.
Yeah, all the departments around us are advertising and trying to get, trying to hire. And they're still trying, so.
Correct.
You know, supply and demand, demand is high, supply is low.
Okay, so, so then the question is, you know, how many mill levy additional for staffing purposes? Do we need to ask for, you know? Again, this levy will be used for staffing to assist in the declining number of volunteers. We want to make sure there's someone available to respond in an emergency 24 hours a day, every day. You know, I put the whole, I almost said the whole list out here, because we can break it up any, any way we'd like. You know, the one-mill brings in $346,880. You know, I took it all the way up to if you put out there for two, two and a half mills, it'd be $167,000. And here at the bottom, you, do we go for, do we ask for a five-year levy, or do we go for a continuing levy? This year on the.
Which fund were you talking about that's going to take extra money out of if, if we did, whatever, top of the 600?
Be the regular fire fund.
The regular one?
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
So if we, if we go back here and look at the, what this, this, if you keep in mind the 657, I don't know how you want to keep, whether you want to round that to 650 or to 660 or whatever. If that's what it takes for this chart, then if you're focusing on this chart, then, you know, that's, right here's where it kind of puts it, in this 1.9, 1.95. So I put in red my thoughts on where to beat this chart, what we would ask for. Knowing that these prices, you know, are, are going to be going up, and it's going to be a continuing levy, this puts, I would, I would hedge a little bit ahead, so it puts you a little further out before you ever have to go back and ask for any more millage.
So I'll, I'll comment first, and I'll say, I, I would personally, I, I don't think there's much of a difference to the general public between 1.95 and somebody said, and two. And.
Two is what we tried for last time, wasn't it?
1.8.
It was 1.8?
No.
No, we tried for two.
We tried for two, yeah.
But the valuation
Yeah.
was smaller. So with the valuation increasing, where you can go with less millage and still realize the same amount, or a hair better. But like you said, over a period of time, wages are going to increase, everything's going to increase during that period of time.
That's already.
It may be.
Well, lucky what our health insurance did this year.
Yeah.
Yes, your police and fire is at 24%, which we're probably maintaining for 24%, but like you just said, your health insurance.
Well, for goodness sake, he can go work at McDonald's for $15 an hour.
True.
And, and not to say this is, this is the same person, but.
No, I mean.
I, I mean, this is.
You might go get hardly any, just $17 choice. That looks.
It's, it's humiliating. I, I mean, it's, it's one of those things where it's, it's, that is not a living wage.
You go back to that first page, are you done with that? The first, the first levy, the two.
I guess a little bit of my heartburn, and I'll just put it out here. Yes. If we had, I mean, I, I think Paul has said that he has retirement plans. If we had another chief, is this something that they would, would they want to do something different, I'll put it that way? You know, is there something else that, so are we, are we doing something more permanent that somebody else could come in and maybe make some changes that would make this so it's not 100% necessary?
I, I, so, so I, I I think we do have somewhat of a culture problem. Now, I don't know where the source of that leads back to, and I'm not going to postulate. What I will say is that I don't think the overall volunteer situation is going to change. I mean, you look at the chart, yeah, COVID, like everything, ruined everything. But I, I really don't think they're going to come back. I just don't think you're going to see, society has genuinely changed.
I agree with you. I think that if we did do the mill, like say you did two mill, or 1.95 or whatever, you got a set rate in there, well, you might not be able to fill with six.
Mm-hmm.
And then you're looking at a dollar per hour, because that's what we just talked about, right? It's going to come down to a dollar per hour to pull people into our facilities.
We may only get four for the same amount.
We willing to have X amount of funds, right? And we want to continue to buy good equipment, right? So if you, you're either going to lose out on equipment and buying people, or you're, you're going to fluctuate that back and forth, is what I'm looking at. So I'm saying that if you do do the people, then this number, if it's the red one up there, right, we fall above our 650. But the problem is, the rate, rates are going to go up all the way through. Working that chunk and getting to the general fund again with the fire department.
Yeah, even with the five-year levy, it's going to be.
Yeah.
About in five years.
If you set with a house full, brand-new equipment, nobody to sit behind the steering wheel. Yeah, that's, that's spending bad money after bad.
Well, this is where it's like, okay, you, you can shoot it low, or you can shoot it too high, but ultimately, I don't think any of us want to go back to the public with egg on our face and be like, well, you know, thanks for giving us the 1.9, but we, we just can't attract the talent, because we can't pay enough.
That's very correct.
I, I, I mean.
You got to do comparison with this, like Scott said, the surrounding area, but you can't do somewhat compared to water, you're not going to gain it.
There are some benefits to working here compared to other facilities too, so we can't knock that out as well. I mean, there's, you know, but that's also a personal interest.
Mm-hmm, or it is.
You know what I mean?
Yes.
You might not have as many runs as some of the other facilities, but you're already paying more per hour there.
It's blood.
Now, we should fall below that, but how far below is going to be the question, right? That takes all into account as well.
But, well, and, and I, I think too, it's like, you know, that sets us up for saying, you know, okay, well, who's willing to settle for a rundown show? And, and you know, frankly, I just, this is one of those things where I think we, we have to provide the very best level of service that we can, and we have to do everything we can to attract top talent. Because it, they're not coming out of, of the village, they're not coming out of, of the township, you know, it's, it's, we have to create these people, we have to attract these people, and, you know, I, I like it in theory, I like it in idea, but I just don't think there's enough excitement, there's enough, you know, for what people want.
Right.
Just like Scott said, surrounding departments are out there trying to get help now.
And they're not.
They're not successful.
See, that's, that's the other question.
Or, or they're motion.
You know, the other thing too, so you've got, you've got a couple of different points there that I, that I want to continue on too, is like, you know, we talk about mutual aid, where it's given, or it's received, and stuff like that too, and you're talking about a talent pool that's out there, there's a very limited talent pool everybody's competing for. So the other thing, question that we have too, is that at some point, if we do not get the funds or get a levy here with our people, do we look at it joint? Fire Department joint EMS stuff, it's always that possibility out there, because that brings a better pool of talent in, and to be able to support it with two different areas instead of just one. You know, that's always a, always an opportunity too, that I, you know, I've seen a lot of them go to it lately, and I can see the reasons why. I mean, I mean, I'm third in order too, I mean, it's all, it's also.
100%, you know, and I, I think it really, we have to lay it all on the table. You know, it's not something that I think any of us, nobody wants to pay more taxes. Nobody wants to go through and, and ask for this, but.
But everybody wants somebody to show up when they're having a heart attack.
This guy.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So I looked at these, because I was really curious about this whole mutual aid deal. So I looked at these reports, kind of detailed that Paul had sent out, and it was the old system versus the new system. In the old system, he supplied January through October of last year, so that was a 10-month period. And then the new system is November of 2022 through now, so that's an eight-month period. And what I came up with, when I count things up and everything, is, and this just doesn't make sense to me, so something is, something is wrong here. So in a 10-month period last year, from January through October, we gave 47 mutual aid, and we received 31. Okay, that's what, that's the report shows.
So we went on 47.
We went on 47 to somebody else's area. We received mutual aid 31 times.
Okay.
Okay, in a 10-month period. On the new system, which was an eight-month period, November through now, we gave 32, and we received 81. So WTF is what? Like, how, are they not, were they not recorded in the old system properly? Is, is it a system problem, or is it?
Or true.
I was going to say, or has it really gotten that bad?
Has it really gotten that bad? Yeah, but in that.
I mean, you think about people like Brian Armold and Clifton, and, you know, these other people that were always, to me.
I had two firefighters on my crew.
Right.
And I listened to the radio all day long. Those numbers are accurate.
I'd say they were too.
And were last, and last year, were they not, I mean, because we gave more than we received last year, 47 we gave, and we received 31, so.
Well.
So what is different than, no, I'm not complaining, but I'm saying, it seems like Paul's been complaining about people not being here.
There are, the, the big variable, okay, and I don't know whether you looked at this, and I, and I'm blind, I mean. and I, and I'm blind, I mean, because I don't, I haven't seen any of this data. What times? What times of the day?
It doesn't, yeah, the old system doesn't show, it just says like a total.
That's your, that's your big variable.
What, what, what about EMS?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Consider a chief's health also over the past eight months. You know, would he not be one of the first people to?
True, that's it, too.
I, 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 I mean, he, he's the one, and then whatever backup he can get, and otherwise, I mean, they're all mutually.
But most of your responsibility are to be in the middle of the day. Six to, you know, you've got probably an influx, just like we do with the power company, six to four is my biggest time.
How much are you willing to bet on that? No, I'm, 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 I'm not trying to be a smartass.
No, but people are up and moving, that's what it comes down to, right? People are up and moving, things are moving around.
You would not believe what goes on between four-thirty in the morning and six-thirty in the morning.
Oh, no, I, that's what I'm saying, I mean, there's.
I mean, I, I, and I'm being serious, I mean, you know, this morning, just for an example.
Oh, yeah.
I turn, I got in the truck at ten minutes after five to go to, to go to the shop, to go to work, and I turned on the radio then, and it was already chattering, I mean, just, 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 just going on, and it was that way until about eight o'clock, and then it shut off.
Everybody made it to work.
Yeah. I mean.
It looks like going to work.
I mean, that's one, that's one explanation, one, one variable, um, but yeah, I mean, you, and you name it, car wrecks, dog bites, cardiac arrest, overdose, I mean, just fifty-two cars in a bag.
Yeah, exactly, right.
Um, you know, and then it was quiet for probably, I mean, other than, than the sheriff's deputies, you know, going on their little things or whatever, but for our fireside, it was pretty quiet for about three hours, for the most part, I mean, there's onesies and twosies or whatever, I mean, the one, there was one day, I had to change my battery. I, I, I mean, because, I mean, it was one fire right after another, and when you start, so when somebody starts having structure fire calls, it's not just small. If we have a structure fire, we're calling Clear Creek, Turtle Creek, Sugar Creek, uh, Spring Valley. Okay, so now we're dragging all these people in, which is taking them out of their jurisdiction, and then what was happening, so then, so we've got Clear Creek helping us on a fire, just hypothetically, and then Clear Creek gets fire. So they're over here helping us, and now they've got to call mutual aid from Franklin, Franklin Township, Hamilton, to cover their fire.
How many stations do they have?
And it's a cat group.
Clear Creek, do they have just three? Okay.
I think they're getting ready to start on another one.
That's up by their.
I have four.
That's up by their township building. That's that new one, oh, no, it's police.
No, that's a police station.
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, they're starting on, Paul would know.
Yeah.
I, but, I mean.
I agree with you, I mean, there's an influx in there, and it, and you got to be staffed prepared as much as you can.
The unknown, the unknown is, is you never know. When the, in a perfect world, all the fire apparatus stays in the house, never leaves, that's a perfect world, but we don't live in a perfect world. But I can't tell you, well, there was just a fire run right now, allegedly, there's a crash right out here at seventy-three in Clarksville Road, I'm just getting ready to look out, peek out the window, but.
Must be on the side, I don't see anything.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But yeah, you're right, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, looking at statistics of it, seeing when the runs come in, you try to coordinate, that's, but we're, we're staffed twenty-four hours.
That's, and that, and that's where you have to be, and that's where you have to be, to answer Diane's question, yes, that, I think your number, those numbers are actually accurate, because, and I think a large, a large reason for the, the lot, the higher number of receiving mutual aid is probably due to Paul's being off with his injury.
And the other thing I think you're looking at on these reports, Diane, and I didn't compare them like you did, uh, is under this new, uh, recording system that counties implemented, and I had Paul break these out by departments.
Yeah, this is the old, this is the old system right here. Right, this one that you're looking at is from the old system.
Okay.
Yeah. This, the one has, uh, yeah, this is, this is last year's seventy-eight, has seventy-eight total, yeah.
What Andy had requested inside, had him try to pull those when he had, he had time, was to compare, I mean, generally, at the end of the year, he compares total, uh, mutual aid received, total mutual aid given, but had him break it down, how it compares from department to department, like us and that.
Ah, right, okay.
Us and.
Clear Creek.
Clear Creek, right.
You know, so you, you see where, you know, for example, we, we run all the time into Turtle Creek Township, but we rarely get anything out of Turtle Creek Township.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. But, but the majority, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty even, pretty equal.
Right. Well, I mean, I, you know, I can tell, I, when I was on, I ran, you know, my regular night that I ran squad was Thursday night, and I would go, I'd go three weeks in a row, and I'd get a run at two-thirty in the morning, two-thirty, three-thirty, and it, it didn't, and then I would go three, four weeks with none, you know, you know, and I would pick up, and that's just the way it goes. Uh, you know, I mean, I think Jeff, he usually runs Wednesday night, he run, he's on tonight, and he went for five or six weeks, I think, and he'd been, he was able to sleep right through the night, no problem, and then he started getting hammered, two or three runs a shift.
Probably swings of the moon.
And, and there are people that'll tell you that's phooey, and they're, but I'm here to tell you, that has a lot to do with it, with moon phases, and I, Gus would probably agree with me.
Hey, man, that's the wave, so, you know. But.
Walls in the ocean.
Yeah.
No, I, I don't think it's a moon, I always thought it was a siren.
This, well, and that has a lot to do, if, on those runs at two-thirty in the morning, I wouldn't, I'd run my lights, but I'm, and then that's against the law, because if you got your lights, you got to have your siren, but at two-thirty in the morning, I'd run my lights, but I wouldn't run the siren, because what happens is the siren will wake somebody up and they're like.
Heart attack.
Oh, I don't feel so good. Nine-one-one?
You guys are just next door, come by and give me two.
And it's the truth, it's, and it's not a lie, I've seen it.
So Scott would rather have him just not wake up in the morning?
Exactly, yeah, right, yeah. No, no, I, you know, it, you know, it was, you know, what we would, what has happened over the course of the last twenty-five years, or maybe even more, people have forgotten the definition of what an emergency is. You know, and they all say, well, if I call the squad, I can get in faster. That's a fallacy, that's a myth. Now, granted, if you're in an active cardiac arrest, yeah, yeah, you're going ahead of the line, but if you, if you, if you've just got a steak knife stuck in one of your buttocks, no, you're going to sit in the, in the, in the waiting room until, as long as it's not life-threatening, you know, it's a fallacy. People don't know the definition of what a emergency is, the reason for what EMS was originally set up for, going back to the seventies when emergency came on the television, which sparked up EMS across the nation.
They weren't too bad to look at either.
Well, I.
You know, I was watching MTV's doing that.
I kind of liked it when they got to the hospital, but out in the field, they really didn't do much for MTV.
I don't know, it's even fun having a female on the floor.
Well, that's a different point of view.
That's a different. Oh, lordy, nobody's watching this, so anyway, um.
So meanwhile, back to the ranch.
Yes, back to the ranch, um. I personally would like to not vote on this tonight and to think about it until next meeting, but I don't know what you guys.
Wouldn't this have to be submitted? That, that is August.
We have one more meeting, I think.
We still got another meeting, you know?
Uh, the rezlys would have to be passed, sent to the auditor's office for certification, and then back to the board elections by ninety days, which is, I think, August the seventh, which we have a meeting, so we, we, we have to do something at next meeting. And that's going to be precedent, I mean, I mean, we just.
That's running, that's running down to the line.
Yeah.
That's how we do it.
It looks like, uh.
So you're saying another work session in between, or do you want to?
It's a part session. We sleep on it. We sleep on it.
Okay.
Dream session.
A dream session, yeah.
Uh, I don't have access to it, well, I guess if I went to board election, I can pull it up for you, but I've got a copy, and I don't know if I've shared this with you or not, but the Harlem Township, which is a very similar township in Warren County in comparison to Wayne.
That's right about the Winchester.
Yes, well, it's at the other end of Warren County.
It is.
I probably, if you, there's, there's no township like Wayne Township, but probably the most similar will need to be Salem Township or Harlem Township.
Okay.
Harlem Township has about the same, a little fewer people, a lot of rural area, um, they got a little, couple towns in or whatever, and they are on the ballot for five point seven mills for additional levy for fire.
What do they have currently?
What do they have, yeah.
That's my first question. How many do they, what do they have currently, on, what do they have?
I do not know what their current knowledge is, I just know that they've always, there are one township where we typically pass at a sixty-nine percent rate, they are always eighty percent, and I just never understood how they could always get to eighty percent of people passed.
Well, you know, what's interesting is that, uh, Central Committee, Republican Party Central Committee, they congratulated me because Wayne Township is the most conservative township in all Warren County, which is also, you know, and in my specific precinct, the two-thirty-six, two-thirty-seven, it, it's also the most conservative, um, and I just frankly think people hate taxes.
That is true.
They just hate taxes.
Well, sure we do.
Just take a money out of the pocket, explain it, I don't like it any other way.
But at the same time, there's still one, all the services.
Exactly.
And services come with a price, everything comes with a price tag.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I mean, I honestly think part of it is we have such a, I mean, I think we have a pretty high, uh, school tax, like they take so much of our percentage out, and people don't see that it's the schools that are killing your taxes, it's not us.
It's just government.
I know.
That, that, they, they love us all together.
Yeah.
They don't look at the house district.
But they don't, but the, 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 the general electorate does not look at the school as being government.
Right.
They don't look, they don't look at that, and they don't, they don't know what we actually do for them, you know, and so, you know.
All they say is your frackler load, a couple, three times, four times maybe a year, clouds, snow, and winter.
Exactly.
I mean, getting that, that tire chip stuff all in my car.
Exactly, yeah, and then wonder why they have to have tire chip seal, you know, and, you know, the, it, I, I can't tell you how many times I've had to break it down to residents, you know, all these taxes I pay, I should be having, I, I said, I'm not getting that. I said, you want to know where the bulk of your money is? It's going up there on the hill.
Yeah.
I said, for what you pay to the township, and I only get just a little bit of that on your tax stub, I said, you tell me how to do it.
If we, um, that would be a good thing, if we stick something out there, is to have a pie chart of, um, where the taxes that, that they go pay to, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, you know, what, what's the, what's the, what's the average, you know, what, you know, to pick a, pick an average tax bill?
Right.
And then break, and then break it out.
Distribution, right.
This much goes to the school, this much goes to the fire department.
Everybody should be the same, basically.
Pardon me?
Everybody, like, every, every, each property should be the same.
Yeah, I mean, I mean. Based, based on your, you know.
The village is going to be different, because they have.
Hundred thousand dollar houses, that's not actually good.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I think that might be a little light, I mean, for people to actually understand it, you know, go over two-hundred, two-hundred fifty thousand dollar home, that valued at two-hundred fifty thousand, and then break that out, you know, and then they can do the math.
I'd, I'd, yeah, I'd, I'd say savings, you use dollars.
Pardon me?
If you're using, if you're doing savings with marketing, do dollars.
Right.
But if it's cost, you better use a percent.
Yeah.
Sure, sure, sure. Well, but I, yeah, but I mean, even percentages, I mean, you break it out, you know, and show them how much, how much of their taxes that they pay to Wayne Township goes to the road department.
Yeah.
That we use to resurface roads.
Well, that, that, that's true, too, so to actually have the pie chart, and then, and then a subsection of that, and say, okay, of this, this piece of pie.
I mean, I'm just talking about my department, but I mean, it's.
Great, no, bar. And, and, I think, I think visually, though, I think it's important.
Absolutely, I mean.
Yeah.
Being, being a little selfish, I think it'll help me down.
Yes, I'm for Harlem.
Yeah, still has a little more in Harlem Township.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
So there are five point seven mills, uh, that would generate, they'd collect one million, three thousand, four twenty-six, so it appears that they were focusing on the millage that they could get around a, a million dollars.
In the, there are.
Is that continual?
Is that, yeah.
And it is, uh, being listed as a continuing period of time, yes.
Wow.
Five point seven mills, so there are.
But, okay, so go, look.
So that's, that'd be for staffing, and, but they're probably looking at bringing on additional, two people or three more people over top of what I was, they're probably going three people per shift, what they're.
Oh, I, I can see that.
So if you, if you push our, push our valuation, our, our taxation, whatever, to about maybe, I'm going to just spitballing here, looking at this, maybe about three point two five
to equal that.
To equal that dollar amount, I, give or take, I, I, I don't know what I'm.
But I asked Paul, and he did not know what their chief, you know, what exactly they're, we're going, but we, we talked, we both assumed it's for staffing.
Right.
And I would assume that the way this works is out is probably three people per shift.
Do you, you don't know if they already have, other than the chief, have, have they got full-time members or full-time employees on the department?
I do not know that, I didn't, I mean, Paul did say that their chief, new chief under now was having troubles.
They, they're routinely, when eighty-one gets called out, they're putting one piece of equipment out of service in order to respond to a call through the day. Now, in the evening, when people are off work, you know, and what little bit of volunteer base they have, they can do a little better, that's just listening to the radio.
Yeah.
Yeah, while you're thinking about this, while I get this pulled back up here, let's say, for example, we went with exactly what we need, and we went with that chart, we're going to hire those six people, and my thoughts on, on that is, you know, what are we going to do three years, five years from now, when the salaries go up or whatever, or the people have more seniority and, you know, they want more pay? Again, we take that, you know, we're only asking for the money to staff these six people, anything over above that, we would take it out of fire fund, our regular fire fund.
Fire fund, eh.
And as, you know, as long as we can do that, and we've got enough.
We've got enough.
Enough carryover in it right now, that that would last for a while. The, the thing that I would advise and recommend is that we keep an eye on that, so that you would have two options then, either when that two point four, five mil levy came up, Either when that two point four, five mil levy came up, doing something with it, or you just leave it as it is. Don't change it, just continuously renew it. And then as your wages go up and maybe it's starting to take too much out of your regular fire fund, then that's when you look back at it, putting a, an additional continuing levy on. But you do it before you have to ask for two mils. You know, like for example, if you needed another hundred thousand, you know, you only ask for point, you know, point three mils.
Couldn't you take the continual levy and, um, do a replacement continual levy to the, the re, it, it reevaluates based on the property?
Maybe you did a two point five as a replacement, continuing.
No, this, if, if, let's say we did the one point nine five.
You could drop it, you could drop that levy.
Yeah, you, you, you would have to, let's say you had, let's use the one point nine five, I have that in red. If we decided that we would need it, two point five. We could run a two point five and have the language in it that says that if, you know, he passes two point five, then we'll drop to one point nine five, continue.
Right, yeah, it's kind of.
I guess, okay, so you can't do the replacement levy on a continual? So, so that you get the, the new valuation?
That's how you, how you do it.
Because, yes, I guess you could, I guess you would just have to.
Well, you'd have to balance.
You'd have to figure out what that new figure is.
Right.
And then, so, and actually, you, you just really couldn't, it'd be hard to do it that way. I don't, you have, you have to drop it or you just add to it.
Isn't that what the Wayneville Police Levy's doing? Isn't it on the ballot for two, uh?
Yes.
Drop one to pick up a, a zero.
Yes, running as a replacement.
Right.
All right, folks.
Yeah, you could run it, I guess, as a replacement.
I, I enjoy the company of all of you, but I am utterly exhausted and I don't think we're going to accomplish anything else tonight.
All right, we are going to move on then. And we have any correspondence?
I have none.
No.
Okay, sorry. Um, elected officials comments, I think we've had lots of comments. Anything additional? Don't, don't say anything if you want to go home. No, we have no work session, no executive session. I make a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-two P M.
Second.
Oh, those papers safe, I say, yeah.
Aye.
Thank you.